To our Spring Town Meeting. Like, I think, a first, I don't know. We're just waiting a couple of minutes to make sure nobody else is coming in. And what we'll do is run the meeting according to Robert's rules. And if anybody has any questions or something's unclear, just stop me and we'll... You know, you can ask me, or if I have an answer, that'd be good. There's a couple of announcements. There'll be a COVID vaccination clinic here, June 2nd, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. And three types of vaccines will be offered. They don't list what they are, but we probably all know. And also, just as a protocol, when you approach the ballot box, if you could say your name to Nancy, your full name, and to Kate as she checks you out. So you'd be checking in with Nancy and dropping your ballot in the box, and then say your name to Kate as you leave. That way, everything's kept pretty tidy. If you're not registered to vote in Granville, could you raise your hand? Okay, that gives them an idea of who's gonna vote, who isn't. If you're a landowner or a resident of Granville, but you're not registered to vote, if there's no objection, I would allow you to speak. So if I hear no objection, if you're from out of town and you own property here, or you rent a house here and you'd like to weigh in on some of the articles, feel free to do so. I'm gonna go through just some basic Robert's Rules stuff, so we know how to organize ourselves for the articles. If they get confusing, we'll know where we can stop and regroup. An article, also known as a question, must be moved and seconded by you folks. And then it has to be restated by the moderator. And then it can be considered for debate and voting. Anyone wishing to speak on the question must raise their hand and be recognized by the moderator. I'd like you to keep your comments to three to five minutes. Everyone will have a chance to speak twice on the question that's being debated. And we have to stay focused on the question that's germane at the time or it's moved to the floor. And I'll call on you a second time after everyone else has had a first chance to speak. So again, you must confine your remarks to the merits of the question that's under debate. You can't all of a sudden ask about the telephone poll if they're gonna put on Route 100. Is everything clear so far? Good. I get confused. Debate may be cut off by a motion to call the question. So as we go forward, if that motion is made, it has to be followed by a two-thirds majority vote to stop the debate. If there's, of course, no objection to that motion, debate ceases, and we will call for a vote. When debate has ended, I will restate the motion and make sure everyone knows, if they vote yes or no, what that will mean to the question. And if there's any doubt, just stop and say, you know, "Could you say that again?" Or, you know, we wanna make sure everybody understands what their vote means when we're debating the question. In most cases, we can use voice or hand voting. Paper ballots have to be cast for listers, auditors, select board members, and elected road and water commissioners. We don't have a water commissioner yet, but maybe someday. Also, Robert's Rules can be modified by a motion from the Assembly. That requires two-thirds of the majority vote. And if I do anything that seems unfair, or if I'm cutting somebody off unfairly, just let me know. I mean, I think also, looking at some of the articles that we have to go over tonight, again, unless there's an objection, maybe we can have a little debate if it's, you know, reasonable and nobody's getting angry at anybody. As long as it goes forward, that's my main thing. So I'm gonna hand the... No, am I?
You didn't last year.
I didn't. I don't really have to, actually.
You don't have to.
Okay. I'm looking for... Does somebody mind a move Article 1? Judy? Second? Article 1, "To elect all town officers as required by law." A, "To elect a moderator for a one-year term ending 2023." Do I hear any nominations? Judy? Are there any other... Any other... Anybody else interested in moderating? Okay. All in favor of me, you can say aye. Consider it for next year, though. It's kinda fun. Sorry. 1B, "To elect a select person for a three-year term ending 2025."
Nominate Lucide.
Second.
I nominate Dan Sargent.
Second.
Who did the second? Great, so we're reading Dan Sargent. Anyone else?
Nomination ceased.
Seventh.
If there's no objection, we will close nominations. And we'll cast a paper ballot for Daniel or Bruce. Yes?
Is the move to the floor... Can I ask that each of them make a statement about what...
Oh, sure. Daniel, you wanna give us a little...
For those of you who are helping out, I'm Dan Sargent. Been a fire chief in Granville since 2013. Been serving the town since I was 16 years old, volunteering in a life away. I'm a sixth-generation Granville resident. And Granville's home to me. And just looking to serve in whatever way I can.
Bruce?
Yeah, I've been here for a few years overseeing a lot of different projects. We had a post office come to town years ago. The steeple got renovated. Got a historic grant for that. We've got 300 people in this town. We need more volunteers. We need more people to participate in our democracy and get involved. We're really needing people on the planning commission, conservation commission. We would certainly like to, you know, continue to move this town forward. It's a great place. I certainly have a background in the legislature back in the '90s and have been doing this at the school board back for almost 10 years, 2000. And I'm concerned a little bit that Cheryl Sargent and Nancy Sargent either, and Dan Sargent are working on this town. And I'm a little bit concerned about that. And I'd like to continue as a select person and would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we'll provide a paper ballot and cast your vote. Does everybody have paper?
There's paper scattered around the room on the windowsills.
Cheryl says there's paper on the windowsills if you need it. The results are in. Daniel had 13 votes and Bruce had 38. So Bruce is in for another three years to 2025. Congratulations. Let's see. 1C, "To elect a town clerk for a three-year term ending 2025." Do I hear... Cheryl?
I second.
Any other nominations for town clerk?
I move the nomination ceased.
If there's no objection, we'll close nominations. And would someone like to make a motion to call for a paper ballot? One ballot?
One ballot.
One paper ballot.
So moved.
So moved. Okay, so if there's no objection, we'll file one paper ballot for Cheryl Sargent for town clerk for the year ending 2025. Congratulations. 1D, "To elect a town treasurer for a three-year term ending 2025."
I nominate Nancy Needham.
Nancy Needham has been nominated and... What's her name, seconded it?
And who's what's his name?
Was that?
Who was the what's?
Nancy. Nancy Needham. Oh, already named.
Who was the seconded? Okay, NCD.
Nancy DeMers. Again, anybody wanna make a motion to cast one paper ballot? We do have to do this.
I have a motion.
Okay. Yep, and second?
Second.
Yep, thank you. If there's no objection, we'll file one paper ballot to elect Nancy Needham, town treasurer, for a three-year term ending 2025. Congratulations, Nancy. She wished she could be here. She did email me, and she had other obligations, but she's very happy to run for the position. 1C... Oh, 1E, I'm sorry. "To elect a third auditor for a three-year term ending 2025."
I nominate Robert House.
Who?
Second.
Are there any other... It's kinda fun hanging out with, you know, Robin and Nancy.
Another Nancy.
Another Nancy. I just call everybody Nancy, but... Yes?
Move nominations ceased.
And someone seconded that. Nominations have ceased. Roger Stouse was nominated for the third auditor for a three-year term ending 2025. And if there's no objection, we'll just throw in one paper ballot. 1F, "To elect a first constable for a two-year term ending 2024."
I nominate Mark Low. I second that. If there's a two-way, I move that we table this vote until after we vote on Article 2.
Okay, so there's a motion to table 1F and second it to vote on it after we vote on Article 2.
Just a note on the constable. You gotta have a constable regardless. So you could do it either way, I suppose. Regardless, you have to elect a constable, other than that.
I have no problem moving, tabling that to after Article 2. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to moving it to after Article 2?
Anyone have objection to any question?
Go ahead.
I was just wondering, should we table G for the second constable for one year? And if that was strictly only an East Granville person and they already fall under, what we may or may not do in Article 2?
I can't really answer that question, but...
I could probably answer that. It could be either way. The second constable generally has been a East Granville person. And the second constable in my 30-some years has never been certified. So if they're not certified, they would be in the law enforcement anyway. But I guess you could do it either way.
Just make sure we don't have...
Yeah, well, that's a good question. So it's been... Yes?
I just... If you'd just mind, can you explain why it would be necessary to move to after Article 2? And just so we understand the rationale.
Yes, because depending on the vote on Article 2, we will then know what the nature of the constable position will be. And that seems to me would affect the vote.
Any other... Yes?
It could affect just the candidate, whether they want to do it or not.
Right. Anybody else have a question before we vote on tabling? So there was a motion to table and a second, and there's no objection. So we'll vote on 1F after Article 2. So that's approved. And I'm looking for someone to move Article 2.
Are we gonna do that?
Oh, yeah, right. Thank you. 1G, "To elect a second constable for a one-year term ending 2023."
Nominate Jeff Lumber.
Jeff Lumber's been nominated and seconded. Any other nominations from over the mountain?
Nomination ceased.
If there's no objection, we'll close nominations for second constable and cast one vote for Mr. Lumber. 1H, "To elect a delinquent tax collector for a one-year term ending 2023."
I nominate Nancy Needham.
I move nominations ceased.
Any question? Yep, go ahead, Doug.
He says Nancy is a treasurer. Is that a conflict? Being a delinquent, no, it isn't. I just asked that question.
No. No, no, it's totally up and up. We do have a chart here, but I checked it unless I missed something.
No.
So it's good.
Does yes mean it's a conflict, or yes it's not?
Well, you can't be an auditor and a select person. So yes means it's good. It's fine.
Another question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Would it not be for the town if they don't be the... Since Nancy is a treasurer anyway, would it be more... Would it be thought of rolling into the town business and maybe increasing her hours of what she does? I'm just asking a question. Other towns do it. Not the only town. A lot of towns do it through the tax collection within the law. So the town board would struggle.
Is that a question for the select board?
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, 'cause I don't have a...
Is this something they wanna do or block out or...
I don't think it's ever come up, really.
Do you have a view to the past?
I think there's something to do with some of the penalty or whatever that may go to the town rather than if you're both treasurer and delinquent tax collector. So we'll certainly keep an eye on that.
Right. Okay, so we still have to vote for Nancy. So I would ask that we cast one paper ballot if there's no objection and call Nancy Needham our delinquent tax collector for a one-year term ending 2023. 1I, "To elect a third cemetery commissioner for a three-year term ending 2025." So I'm not sure who we're losing.
I'm current.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Do you want to do, Cheryl?
Sure, if they want me.
So I nominate Cheryl Sargent. I second.
Okay. Judy, second? Yep, Judy second. And... Nominations to be closed. Do I hear a second on that? Everybody in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? There we go. Okay, so we're now going to move Article 2. So someone... And we have a second on that? Article 2's been moved and seconded, and it reads, "Shall the town of Granville vote to prohibit constables from exercising any law enforcement authority pursuant to 24 VSA Chapter 193... 1936A?" Well, generally, the person who has moved it starts. Judy?
Yeah, and I have written something. And just to keep thoughts straight, and it won't take long to read. Vermont statute requires each town to have a constable, but not necessarily one with law enforcement authority. For many years, we had a claim non-enforcement constable. Ironically, I've been told that in the '90s, Mark O'Ille was instructed by voters and the select board to get law enforcement training and certification. However, we submitted this petition because we don't think we're getting our money's worth. Many of us have been frustrated with saving this constable's health when he's actually needed. At one time, I needed him just to serve a legal document. I couldn't even reach him. I called, but the phone message I left went unanswered. Others have spoken of his usual response being, "I can't help you with that," or "And/or all the state police." O'Ille himself points out in his annual report, "For an immediate law enforcement concern, you should always call the Vermont State Police. They are still the primary law enforcement for the town." Meanwhile, we've been paying a lot for lots. The 2021 full-year salary was $8,000 and was meant to pay for eight hours a week. But in terms of actual service in Granville, eight hours a week rarely happened. Yet, he was paid in full at the beginning of each month. And I'd like to know why we are paying for his car insurance, which is increasing from $450 to $600 annually, and why do we pay his monthly cell phone fee? The proposed budget does cut his salary, but also reduces required hours. The amount of cut is to offset equipment replacements. But the total of the new salary figure and that equipment replacement comes to over $9,000. On top of that, Article 6 proposes an increase of $1,500 plus...
Judy? I'm sorry. I'm sorry to introduce your... Okay, 30 more seconds. But protocol, had I known you were gonna read something, that's not allowed, actually. You can't read something. But it's fine because you had this prepared. But you have to wrap it up very quickly now. Okay.
There's a proposed $1,500 increase for end equipment fund. So the total proposed expenditure is around $12,000. There are seven plain constable duties. I have a list here if anyone's interested. I think we should go back to having a plain old non-enforcement constable. And by the way, an attorney at BLCT recently told Roger that he's noticed a trend for towns to remove the law enforcement aspect from their constable duties. Last thing, finally, I suggest we have something like a budget account to pay that plain constable, something like per task or per hour. That's it.
Thank you. Just to follow up my comment, Robert's Rules, and I'm not sure why, don't allow the Assembly to read from a paper, prepared comments. You have to, you know, memorize them. But in this case, it's, you know, it's fine. Just so everyone else knows that. Okay, are there... Mark?
All right, so just to clarify some things here. I'm not sure if Judy did get information. I originally started, like the report said, in '85, which I was certified as a law enforcement officer back in '85 and have been ever since. I was away for a few years in the service. I came back in '92. I got recertified again. I have been the constable since then, as I said in my report. So I have been certified. I wouldn't be doing the job if I wasn't. And in 2012, I believe it was, the state mandated that if you did do law enforcement, you needed to be certified, okay? My job is a part-time job. I have no benefits, no retirement, none of that. I work when I can, and that's where reflected the salary being set down. This is a stipend for an average hours, average hours. It's not necessarily set hours. But so, if anybody has any other concerns, they can be more freely talk to me. Now, if this passes and law enforcement authority is reduced, the constable, whether it's me or somebody else, cannot respond, will, cannot respond legally to any complaint because that would be a law enforcement authority issue. Whether it's a suspicious vehicle, an alarm going off, whatever, that would be a law enforcement function, okay? Just to clarify, everybody's aware of that. Most nights, I'm home. So if I needed to, I come, okay? It's not uncommon for VSP to call me, and I go somewhere, okay? No big deal. Car insurance, that was brought up. My standard car insurance is $600 less if I buy standard car insurance. Well, I have to have a vehicle to do the job, and it costs extra. My regular insurance would not cover me with lights on my car. Firemen technically take a risk by having red lights on their car as well. Anyway, that's the cost of that. Just to see if there's anything else I wanted to bring up. So any other questions, or any... Anybody else? I'm sure I have a couple of things, but I don't wanna take up any more time.
You're perfect. Any... Yes, Sean?
I looked at the all reports of Mr. O'Ille's law enforcement. And I also looked at the budget on fiscal year, what we're in right now. And as of the end of fiscal year, the total amount is $13,159 that the town, our taxpayers, pay for law enforcement in town. I also looked through all the patrols. And out of 10 months, three months, law enforcement was one day a month. Four months, it was two days a month. So I looked at it. So four, I don't know, 11 days, seven months. I really don't think... think thirteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars is worth. The limited coverage for law enforcement.
Uh, Lester's, Danny has a question.
Does anybody have any friends or family that live in Hancock and Rochester, and ever since they pulled their constable down there, know how much Rochester and Hancock is paying for the sheriff's department to come over and patrol the valley? There's a lot more to come over paying Mark if we have a sheriff come over here.
Yeah.
I'd also like to add, I completely see the worry with what we might be paying with the law enforcement. But I will say that I think that on the other side of it, with what you were saying, paying a sheriff, for us over in East Granville, speeding is a big issue, and even if Mark comes over a couple of hours a month and turns his lights on to some people that are flying down twelve A, our houses are literally eight feet from the road, just like these houses right up here in Granville. And so when someone's speeding by, our houses shake, so it's really important to us to have someone there with the lights on and reminding everybody. I think we'd all be pretty hard-pressed to get the state police to run radar on twelve A, or even right here in Granville, or hiring the sheriff. So that's something that is really important to me with pets and kids, and I think that's something we should consider.
Kristi, do you, and then.
I'm just wondering if we're confusing law enforcement to traffic stopping, because if you have an actual emergency call, you get to know if you are driving to the school board meeting last Tuesday and almost get hit right in front of the bus, blowing shot by two cars that were pulling in happy, or, you know, it was me and one and family and the other, and trying to catch you fast, and they were right in my side of the road. So again, eleven days, there's a lot of traffic here that doesn't happen on Thanksgiving weekend, or Memorial Day, or, and now that I drive to Rochester for work every day, the guy is there in Hancock and in Rochester, trying to get those guys that are going to work at seven-thirty in the morning, because they're already there that early, so again, not a Friday night thing, not when things are happening, it's when people are going to work and want to get into school, and they're there in the last three. So I just want to give an equal opportunity to the fact that, for me, if I have any problems at my house, I'm calling the fire department and saying my house is on fire, or so someone will call me, because if you call, the state police, you're waiting forty-five minutes, and Mark doesn't come, and I call, so that's reality too. We're forty-five minutes away from law enforcement.
So that's the type of call to fire department? Okay.
You know, I think when the town first set this up, it's a good thing, overall, but I don't think Mark has the time to do this, and hasn't done it in the last couple of years, to be honest. That's my concern. We're not, you know, I think, yeah, a perfect situation, yes, but Mark needs one more time, has the opportunity one more time, and so, we're not getting in fair shape here at the time. Like the gentleman over here said, he went through the law school, and it's not enough, it's not enough for our town, there's got to be a presence here. If that's what we want, but the way is, right now, I don't think it's fair to attack there, many of us, that we're not getting in fair shape in what we're getting. I mean, Mark is certified, he's qualified, not complaining about that, but I call him many times, what kind of stuff happens? Or maybe I'll get the answer I want, and then I call the state police, whatever.
Mark, Markhead.
Yeah, I mean, just just enlighten you a little bit here, too, just to come back on that. Like I say, I'm not always in town like everybody else, I'm human, I have things to do as well, but one thing I will mention is, as you mentioned yourself, ESP, suspicious vehicle, they're not coming over for that. They might call me and see if I'm available to check on it, and I can't if I'm around. They're not coming over for something like that, because by the time they get here, it's long gone. Addison County, don't even think about contracting them, they are not available. They are short-staffed, just like everybody else. They're not looking for any new contracts, just put that out there, you're aware, if the constable here, whether I work whatever hours, it's better than none, that's all I can say. Also, you got to look at the budget as, about half of that budget is cost. We have to maintain records, we have to, you know, certify radar. We have to have all that stuff that we have to mandatory reporting to the state. Some of that stuff is part of the expense, okay? And then that's a computer system, a lot of stuff's on the computer system. That's how we have to do it, that's, that's why there's cell services used as a computer extender. Everything out there today, law enforcement, is all computer-based.
Kate, and then Jennifer.
I'm just curious, because I want Daniel to point, she said, what does it cost to have the sheriff come to Rochester and Hancock, and I'm wondering if we actually know that figure?
Judy?
I looked into that, and I did post on the front of the form, that what I found out, although I got some figures, but then the last word was, as Mark said, they are short-staffed and cannot and would not, would not provide, would not contract for their services.
I can answer that, probably. Yeah, I'm going to allow Mark just to respond.
Just add it, I don't know what Addison gets, and I'm not a hundred percent on Windsor County, but for instance, Windsor County, last time I stood, it was like sixty dollars an hour plus mileage, so.
Hang on, Danny, yeah.
I'm now going to read my prepared statement, but I'm going to read Mark's report.
Briefly, please, again.
It says, as I, as, these are not my prepared statements, this is from the town report. So as I'm sure everyone is aware by now, I keep busy with my full-time job in Windsor County Sheriff's Office. This keeps me very busy in some months, and I'm not around as much as I can in Windsor County. I'm still available for the town of Granville in my patrol patrols that I have to be doing when available. You may also call me for any issues, you can email me, sometimes emailing is the best way to reach me for law enforcement. Remember, if it is an immediate law enforcement concern, you should always call the Vermont State Police. They are still the primary law enforcement for this town. I will hold over the monthly reports as well, and I don't want to put Mark's efforts down, and I know there's a lot of activities that support law enforcement in general that are not necessarily controlled, like downloading software, or doing the video Zoom training, or attending meetings, those things are really in the reports, and the total number of hours logged so far until the end of April is just short of a hundred and thirty hours. So last year's report, there was an increase in salary to eight thousand dollars, a check of six hundred and sixty-five dollars is cut every month, whether or not hours are worked, but the logs do reflect that Mark doesn't have the time. So in saying that, that there is not enough time for adequate law enforcement or timely response in a lot of cases because he's working, does not that prove that we don't really need that service? For thirteen thousand dollars a year, and next year is four thousand, this is coming up fiscal year, four thousand dollars in equipment, six hundred dollars in automobile insurance, including, that does not include fifty-eight cents a mile, and mileage reimbursement, twenty dollars a month in cellphone, you know, in addition to the monthly salary that is given at the beginning of the month before the logs even created. So whether work is done or not, no matter what the work is, whether it's a patrol, or attending a meeting online, or downloading software, or doing paperwork, it's still the salary. So it just speaks to whether or not we as voters want to support law enforcement, because such an astronomical cost for self-heating hours, is it worth it? I'm voting yes to prohibit law enforcement on Article Two.
We'll go with Rota?
I'm just wondering if the town is willing to have law enforcement, if it was another person taking Mark's place, that the person that people might think they were getting here out of.
That would be a question with the Select Board.
Oh, okay. When does that, when does that happen? I mean, when does that question come up?
Well, when we elect a constable. So I have not heard anybody in town wanting to be constable under Mark.
Yes, I'm trying to get through, everybody has a chance to speak, before I call on you again, I understand. Go ahead, Travis, yes.
It kind of seems like there are ways to defund the police. This has been like a big subject lately, and once it's gone, it's gone. And, I mean, how often are the sheriffs going to hear out here? I see Mark quite a bit over here, and, I mean, like the sheriffs, and you call the police and stuff, they're not probably usually going to come.
Thank you.
Do we really want to de-fund the police? And Mark's, well, Mark's, you can do this for a while, I'm going to enjoy the job.
Thanks, Travis. Jim?
I'd like to call the question.
We have a motion to call the question, and it's been seconded?
I also have a little clarification paper ballot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we need to vote to call this?
People still want to speak, Jim, so the question's been called, there's a second, is there an objection to calling the question?
I'd like to say one more thing.
So we're going to table that, and you, go ahead, Danny.
I don't know how we're looking at the last two years' worth of what Mark has done when it was COVID years, and you couldn't get out of your vehicle, or pull anybody over, or go up to anybody's windows. Even the state police and the sheriffs weren't doing that. They didn't spend no law enforcement control in the last two years because of COVID, so why are we looking at the last two years of Mark's time, when we should be looking at two years before that, when he was actually controlling, when there wasn't a reason not to?
Mr. Mother, just a point, if someone's speaking, could they talk louder or stand up to it?
Oh, sure, did everybody hear? Michael? I heard Danny fine, that's.
That's why, that's why I'm saying.
Let's see, I'm going to, there is a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded to call the question, but there's still discussion, it would take a two-thirds vote of the Assembly to call the question, I'm assuming we still want to discuss this a little bit. Kristi.
I'd just like to back to my first question is, by law enforcement, are we looking at ticket writing, or are we looking at coming to an abandoned car, coming to your house because you called and you have a concern? And the lady from East Granville was wanting to be there to slow cars down in front of her house. What he does for us is slows cars down in front of the town hall, so I guess, I'm looking for a clarification of what the law enforcement is going to be doing. I'm not trying to be one of the police, and I'm just saying, if what we're looking at is, if we're going to hire someone else, we'd be having to sit and write tickets, like I was saying, in Hancock, I mean Hancock, Rochester, are we, what more are we looking for that we don't feel that we're getting than ticket writing?
And just to be clear, everyone, we're talking about, you know, in this article, it's not funding, it's removing the constable's ability to exercise law enforcement. So that's what we're focusing on in this article, you know, the budget has the funding. Doug?
Yeah, I think that is part of the question, what is this role of law enforcement? You know, is it traffic control, like Chris said, or is it, you know, if I have a dog in my house, can he help us? I think we have a defined somewhat, and as far as the salary, the month's salary, if people are concerned about, then maybe we do an hourly salary, not a lump sum every month, it's what he can afford to try to do it. I don't know if we want to do a one lump sum for his actual salary, because I, Mark, I don't think you have the time to do it.
Thank you.
I don't know if, yeah, that's my concern.
Yep. Victoria?
Question, didn't we purchase the radar that I put in the stick-up gear of O'Ille, doesn't that kind of ring a bell?
That was a grant, too.
That was a grant. That was free, thank you, you're welcome.
Yes.
I'm just curious, it sounds like there isn't really an option if his law enforcement is revoked, so I'm curious what would be the benefit to the town having absolutely no law enforcement?
You know, I'm sorry, but I don't, could you state your name, because I'm.
Bea Bennett.
Oh, okay. That's a question for. Richard?
Mark, do you have any, or does anyone have any idea of how much the law enforcement has increased in price in the last ten years?
Well, I, I don't, well, no, I would just say, Richard, you know, we're not talking about financials right now, we're talking about his ability to perform law enforcement, so that would be a budget item, you know, a question related to when we discuss the budget. Anyone else? Virginia?
I guess I'm just looking for a clarification on the duties of the job, like law enforcement versus non-law enforcement stuff. So if there's no law enforcement, then what's left? What's left for them, any constable, I don't know, what's left for them to do?
What's the guy in the truck?
I'm talking.
Right. Yeah, there is a motion to call the question, so as soon as we want to end this, we'll vote on it. Let's see, Mike, you haven't spoke yet.
You know, if you have someone that's not certified, Mark, can you tell us, are your insurance, is there insurance? In other words, when you're responding to a call, are we as a town protected with some insurance because you're certified?
Being, being certified definitely covers the town. If somebody's not certified, and of course, I'm covered by the town for liability reasons, but if someone's not certified and they do law enforcement practices, that's a lawsuit waiting to happen, no matter what it is. If somebody slips and falls, or they get held back, and they get injured, whatever it was, whether it was not intended, obviously, but especially now with all this stuff going on in law enforcement about force, use of force, so.
Judy, you had a follow-up question?
So answer Virginia's question, and B, I think. As I mentioned, there are seven non-law enforcement duties that a constable.
Could you just stand up and say?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm going to read them, because I, as I said, I have a list.
If there's no objection, okay, read.
And how many, my last. And this is, you know, per statute, says, a town may go at special, running town meeting to prohibit constables from exercising any law enforcement authority. B, notwithstanding the provisions of A, constables may perform the following duties, and this would be what is a non-enforcement law enforcement constable that every town is required to have. One, the service of civil or criminal process under DSA blah blah. Two, destruction of animals in accordance with the provisions of blah blah. Three, the killing of injured deer under statute blah blah. Four, provision of assistance to health officer and discharge of health officer's duties. Five, service as a criminal division of the Superior Court Officer under section blah. Six, removal of disorderly people from town meeting under blah blah. Seven, collection of taxes when no tax collector is elected as provided under, so I hope that answers some of those questions.
Let's see, Daniel, we haven't heard from you yet. Let's see, Daniel, we haven't heard from you yet.
So, regardless of whether or not Mark can exercise law enforcement authority, the state police are still going to respond to our student town. Nine times out of 10, that's the case right now. The issue at hand is not whether or not we need law enforcement. All that goes the same things a lot of people said here tonight. We do need law enforcement here. I can name a number of instances just in the Upper Village, you know, that really concern me as a taxpayer. We need law enforcement here. That's not the question. The question is, we're spending about $13,000 a year on law enforcement to have an individual available for this town to respond to those types of emergencies, and they're not available. So, what do we do about that? I'm hoping that the Select Board and Mark are hearing, regardless of the outcome of this vote, the concern of the voters in that we're paying for something we're not getting. That's it.
There is a motion and second to call the question. Do I hear a resounding yes, we'll call the question, or do we still want to debate?
Yes.
Okay. Say again?
Yes.
All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, the question's been called, debate has ended, and Judy?
I make a motion, we have a paper ballot.
Okay, and it's seconded, and if there's no objection, we'll do a paper ballot for Article 2. Just to remind everyone. Yes. Oh, okay, yeah. Just to review, on the paper ballot, if you vote yes, you vote in favor of Article 2, which reads, "Shall the town of Granville vote to prohibit constables from exercising any law enforcement authority pursuant to 24 VSA Chapter 1936A?" So, a yes vote, that passes, a no vote, it doesn't pass. Is that, is that clear?
So, a no vote, we keep it the way it is, and a yes vote, we change it.
Correct. Yep. We have the results. For Article 2. Excuse me, "Shall the town of Granville vote to prohibit constables from exercising any law enforcement authority pursuant to 24 VSA 1936A? Yes, 19, no, 28." So, the constable's law enforcement ability remains intact. There you go. Do you want to keep some of these?
Sure.
Yes, yes, so now we go back to, we're going back to Article 1, to elect all town officers as required by law. 1F, to elect the first constable for a two-year term pending 2024. And there was a motion, I believe, for Mark, which was seconded. And are there any other nominees?
Nomination ceased. Seconded.
We got a cease to nominate and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And I suggest we cast one vote, all in favor, for Mark Belial as a constable for two years, term ending in 2024.
Aye.
Aye. What?
I object to that.
You object to what?
Casting one vote.
There's only one person.
Yeah.
So, we can't, I mean, if there were two people, you could object. Right, so now I'm looking for someone to move Article 3 to the floor.
Still move?
Yep, second. Article 3, we have Mark moved Article 3 to the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Michael, second. Article 3 reads, "Shall the town of Granville vote to accept the budget of $377,064 to meet expenses and liabilities of the town and authorize a select board to set a tax rate sufficient to provide the same?" And this is where we enter into discussion. Unless I hear otherwise. Jim?
I have a question.
And Jim, Jim, could you stand up? Thank you.
I'm starting with the place and I don't know why we don't have a road commissioner report annual report. Usually that helps explain the road. So, do I have an answer?
I'm not quite sure Jim, I've been the de facto road commissioner and, you know, I can go over the road budget. You know, I know you've been involved some, Ken has also been involved. But it's all detailed out here. If you're talking about a written report, that we probably just sort of missed on.
Just remind. Sure Jim, go ahead. But it's this about the budget, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so. I have a problem with cutting the road budget. Particularly considering the inflation that we've got going on. Price of diesel that is a lot more than ours, I think you're going to see. You expose kinds of transitory. I don't know if anybody has given me a power we rate on equipment checks. As you well know, we hired that stuff up. The other part of it is our, I don't see where we're, we are counting for the things that need to be done. We're not accounting for the possibility, which is still not certain, but now we can get crushed gravel locally this year. K5, 250 permits. But that just hears me at this point. But I do know that the last three years, when I was a select board member, there's always a move to lower the road. And we've driven through potholes down the village there all year now. I don't see where that's in the budget. How would I like to see it, you know, not cut, at least table it out, if it looks like that?
Jim?
Jim?
I'm sorry, just for clarification, could we just point out what the account number is and what you're actually?
A minute, the bottom line. We're on page 12. Page 12.
Page 12, okay, thanks.
And the bottom line of our road budget did go down $12,800 in the proposed budget. But you got to understand that we closed out the year before, or closed out the year with a $35,000 surplus. We also have prior to that, $32,000 from the previous two years of surplus. So, in our road budget right now, we've got, we've got $66,000 or so carried forward, which has to stay in roads, can't be used for anything else. And there's a question as to whether or not we should continue to put that in or to lower the tax rate by the surplus. And we've always carried that forward for emergencies and for other work. And you're right Jim, we contract everything out. We are at the mercy of contractors. And that's not an easy thing, you know, we're one of, you know, it's tough to get people to plow our roads, to do the work on our roads, to fill those potholes. We get as many grants as we are eligible to get. And we do have money that we have had carry forward. So, you know, one thing we've cut back on is the sand pile. We haven't gone through as much sand and we could debate whether or not we use too much or too little sand. But we don't need to get another thousand yards of sand this year because we've got a lot of sand already piled up. We've got 2,500 yards or so of gravel that we've already paid for, that hopefully will get down in the next couple of weeks. But again, that again will be something that will carry forward. So, you know, we're working as hard as we can to keep these roads. I know we had a terrible mud season, but so did all of Central Vermont, had a terrible mud season. And we continue, you know, Kenny's done a great job, you know, with grading and putting fabric down and rebuilding some of the roads. And I think our roads are probably about as good as any of our neighbors. So, you know, it's, it's a real challenge and we've got real challenges getting contractors to get the work done.
Doug?
Can I ask a rule question? Is the proposal to do any carving for paving any of this? Post office and even going on Madison Hill has been, I think, not, has been done since I've been around. And both those areas seem to need to be done, except for the potholes there. Not even talking about potholes.
Yeah, we have got, I thought they'd be done by now. We've got to get the sand swept off those pavements. It hasn't been done yet from the winter. We've got the contractor that I thought would already have it done, he's also going to do filling in those potholes.
Are they going to pay back here or just?
We, we have a reserve fund for paving, it's dedicated for paving, but we've got $12,000 in it right now. And we're probably looking at 60, 70, who knows with the price of oil now, what that's going to cost. Probably close to $100,000 to do our.
It was $53,000.
Right, so. Right, so, you know, Kevin does this too, I, yeah, we're probably close to $100,000 to pave, to pave it that we have. Post office hill, bottom of Madison Hill. Buffalo Farm to the bottom.
Judy?
So.
If you could stand please.
If we can't, is it satisfactory to repave those stretches? Can't we fill the potholes?
We have, we have that out right now for a contractor to do that. And he just hasn't gotten to it just yet. You know, the asphalt plants have opened up for a few weeks now and I would hope they would be done by now, but they haven't been. Ken, I don't know if you want to add anything?
I think he was going to do a last, last fall, but it must be a point close on for you.
Right. No, they got to get done. I know people avoiding them, driving on people's front lines to get around these, the worst impasses or, you know.
The asphalt.
Yeah, please, please, please stand so there's some people who can't hear.
The, I was told the asphalt was $90, $95 a ton for the way we're nowadays, which is about like everything else. Are we able to speak?
Yes.
I guess my only comment is if we do, Bruce, you mentioned that we have like 60,000 right now in a fund from unused from the previous years. If people are interested in getting those areas paved and they're going to be a huge expense, if we don't cut the roads budget down to 12,000, could that money that then goes into that reserve be used for that as a project over time? If people want that money to be used or something like that?
Well, we could decide to pay them, you know, with the money that we have, for sure.
Okay. So, if that was like a reason to not want to cut the budget, in case that's like an expense that we want to keep saving up for?
There's a question later on to add, number $6,000 to paving. So, somebody could amend that to make it $100,000 and get it done, you know, but.
Any other questions on the, yes Jim?
We did this budget that you listed. Do you have any funds in there that are funded for a mud problem?
Yeah, I, Jim, I, we're, we're tackling. I know Richard Poole, a couple of years ago, went out and did a great job mapping. Ken and I are still looking at the worst spots, you know, there's the, the stretch on Palabuck is, was the spring. Ken, I don't know if you want to get it, you know, we've got over 2,000 yards of gravel that are already paid for in this year's budget. It's already been paid, that with fabric and some stretches of the worst parts of the road is going to get attention. And by the end of June, right Ken?
Correct.
So, that gravel is stayed in the yard?
That gravel is down at the ball mill with our name on it. And I hope we can use, I hope we can use every drop of that gravel by June 30th in this fiscal year. I'd be very happy if we didn't have anything to carry forward. Let's get it on the roads.
Bring your bucket today.
Okay, there's a motion on the table to accept Article 3. It's been seconded. Any more discussion or amendments or any questions about the budget? The question's been called. All in favor of accepting, well, I gotta read it, hold on. "Shall the town of Granville vote to accept the budget of $377,064 to meet expenses and liabilities of the town and authorize a select board to set a tax rate sufficient to provide the same? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 3 passes. Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Article 4 reads, "Shall the town of Granville vote to authorize the treasurer to apply any surplus remaining from the highway budget's current fiscal year, fiscal year, into the Highway Capital Investment Fund?" Question's been called and seconded. All in favor of Article 4, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And someone moved?
Move Article 5.
And seconded. Article 5's. Article 5 reads. I'm reading here. Richard? Article 5. "Shall the town of Granville vote to increase the Highway Capital Investment Fund in the amount of $6,000 for purpose of repaving town roads? Any discussion about that?
You said there's, Bruce, you said there's already 16, I'm sorry.
I think there's $12,000 in that paving fund. And this, this question's been on for a few years to just try to build up a fund so we can pave the entire roads. But $6,000 doesn't even make up for the cost of asphalt over the last couple of months is what we need because it's going so high.
So Ken, Sam, Tony, Wade, you're thinking of the number?
Well, I mean, that's for these folks to, you know, I think we've heard it's probably close to $100,000 to pave those roads, just where there's pavement down. This year, we, like I said, we'll fill the potholes. That'll help for hopefully a while. But those roads are going to need pavement at some point.
Judy was next, and then I, I see Sean.
I only wanted clarification that when we say repaving town roads, that, but Bruce answered, we are only talking about existing pavement.
Exactly.
And Doug, you were next.
At $6,000 a year, we're never going to get to that point of payment.
I'm sorry?
At $6,000 putting money into, we got $20,000 into it. I mean, when, when you get, I'm just saying, I know you're going to fix the potholes. How long are we going to take us if we want to do it? Is it 10 years from now, is it 20 years? Because that's $6,000 a year.
Well, I think, I think, I think when we first started a couple of years ago, we were thinking $60,000 or so, you know, over 10 years. But now, I think the cost is at least double that to pave our roads.
So should we be looking at on you something like that, do over 20 years or something?
Well, that, that would certainly be something that we could do, is go out and ask the town...
You get it done, you get it done.
Yeah, yeah.
Sean, and then, then Jim.
You have to tell them to take, when you have $60,000 in surplus, take $20,000 out of that surplus and put it into this fund here. Can we do that now?
We, we could use that, we could use $60,000 to pave the roads in addition to this 12 to be 18, I guess, so it could happen.
Maybe the town should earmark it. I figure we put it right into this fund right now.
But you can't do it without more.
Yeah.
Vote out more?
This is a warrant article.
Right.
Adds to the total tax.
That would be a suggestion for another, right. Jim was next, and then Michael.
All this federal money that apparently is coming into the towns, that's, well, where's that standard? Can we use that for paving?
As far as, you know, Jim, the rules are still coming out with the ARPA money.
Okay, so we should account on it this year?
No, I, you know, and we've got $40,000 in ARPA money in that neighborhood. So, you know, it's, it's not like, you know, you hear some of these towns have half a million dollars. But it's based on population and all, and so the, the money that we get on the ARPA funds is not real significant.
Based on population?
Yeah, and, yeah, and, and, you know, they're, it's earmarked for water and sewer projects. It's earmarked for public safety. You know, general maintenance, it's not.
Okay, one other simple question, and I'll just second. We have on page 19, it gives all our funds. And the last two articles suggest a fund called Highway Capital Investments, I don't know if it's called. But that doesn't appear in the name of any of our funds here.
I think probably the heading is Highway Budget Surplus Funds, Jim. That's the capital, should be named correctly, you're right.
But the, we just, John, now talking about funds for paving roads.
And then there's, and then there's the paving, Funds for Paving Roads is one fund. The Capital Fund is the next one, the Highway Budget Surplus Funds.
Oh, okay.
That's the, it should be named correctly.
But this, this $1,000, which you're asking for now, that's really going to go into the paving?
Yes, goes dedicated to paving.
Okay.
There's nothing that says our surplus funds couldn't be used for paving, but we cannot use our paving funds for anything else.
Hang on, Michael, do you still, I have a question, and we'll come back to...
Could you clarify repaving what town roads?
Town roads that have pavement on them now, with potholes.
Existing ones.
So the existing pavement is, is, the bottom of Madison Hill has pavement, Post Office Hill goes a half mile of pavement, bottom of Buffalo Farm has pavement.
Thank you.
We're not looking at paving all the roads in Granville unless you really want to go for $2 million or so, or more, that wouldn't even do it. It's about a million dollars a mile or something, I have a little...
Robin?
This is a really lovely question, but is it part of the, do you have to take and have to have paint applied to those roads? And lots of dirt roads come down to Route 100. And what have, what are the reasons?
That's, that's, that's another thing that has been brought up in the past. Why do we even have pavement? Maybe we should take the pavement up and just have gravel.
Yeah, how expensive would it be? I know, maybe chewing out the produce.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, it'd be a lot cheaper than paving. But, you know, that, that's another, another big question that we would probably put to the voters, should we eliminate the paving? We get, we do, we would want to get pricing on what it costs to do that first. But we haven't seriously looked at that. But we can.
Yeah, Jim?
Just a little history on that. The difficulty with doing gravel down there was dust control. On this steep hill there, the reason that was done was because it gets washed for you really quickly, people accelerating with that. But the village is important, and so dust control, and then you have to put calcium chloride on it to keep the dust down. And that's quite the joke. So that's why originally the decision was made. And the reason they did it bottom of Buffalo Hill was just because, well, we got it on the other two.
Any other?
Call the question?
All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
The question is, shall the town of Granville vote to increase the equipment fund for the town, oops, I'm sorry, that's the next one. Shall the town of Granville vote to increase the Highway Capital Investment Fund in the amount of $6,000 for the purpose of repaving town roads? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article V passes.
Move Article Six. Article Six?
Yep. Article Six reads, shall the town of Granville vote to increase the capital equipment fund for the town constable in the amount of $1,500? And discussion? Judy?
I'd like to know why.
This equipment fund was started last year. This is for replacing, equipment in general, but mostly two-way radios. Two way, I currently have two, two radios in my vehicle. One was used when I got this vehicle, the other one's even older, probably 15 years old maybe. Anyway, to replace both radios is like six grand, so they don't keep. I've been trying for grants for years, as I mentioned in my statement there, but because it's a personal vehicle, they won't give me a grant to replace those. They originally gave me grants when we got those radios, that was the, probably 15 years ago. My main radio that I use to contact ESP is the one that's bothering the most, my primary radios, and when I need them most, and I probably can't even wait another year to replace it, so I'm trying to work something out on that. But that's why we need that to put in the fund. I was trying to, trying to spread it out so we didn't have to have funds all at once at the most.
Any other questions on the question?
What about considering repair of the radio versus replacement?
These are old radios that are obsolete in a sense, especially now with the narrow banding. I think they are narrow bailable, but the problem I'm having with this particular radio is a shop that works on this bike didn't even anymore. That's my biggest issue, is the brand I happen to have right now, nobody's selling it anymore.
Any other questions on Article Six? Victoria?
I know that the, the fire department often kind of looks to wealthier fire departments for used equipment, but they're usually away. Have you, is that an avenue you're going to try and look for?
That's, I've looked at that, and the same problem, the same problem I'm having, they're replacing them because of similar, similar reasons, so. And most people are not replacing them right away just for, because of cost. But I have looked into that avenue, I'm trying to find something.
Motion to call the question? Or is there any other discussion?
Call the question.
Second.
Got a motion to call the question in a second, and the motion reads, shall the town of Granville vote to increase the capital, the, the equipment fund for the town constable in the amount of $1,500? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article Six passes. Somebody want to move?
You can go with Article Seven.
Thank you. Second. Article Seven, shall the town of Granville use the Conservation Commission Capital Investment Fund in line item 613 of approximately $3,200 for improvements to the playground behind the town hall and/or improvements to Granville Commons? Is there discussion on this? Mike, I saw you go first.
Why?
This money, this money was in, is in the purview of the Conservation Commission that hasn't met for a couple of years. So we put this on there just to free up that money, either do some work on the playground back here, or do some other work down at the Commons.
So either work, or it's happening?
It's just, it's just freeing up the money to select work, so the select work can decide where the best use would be. Yeah, yeah, but without a Conservation Commission, this money's just locked up. So, you know, the, the reason we put it on the question is just to free that money up and be able to use it. And the playground, insurance carriers told us we can't have a playground unless we get some bad surfaces underneath it and the copper stuff so that, so that it's a safe place, you know? Taking most of the swings off in there, you know, we're not quite sure where the playground is going to go, whether it should just be totally brought down, you know? It'll be on select board agendas whenever we do, so stay tuned and come to our meetings.
Christie had a question, then Marilyn, then Judy.
Me, I was here right up today, and I was thinking that we have to keep it in good working order for the insurance. Okay, really, you can't have a playground if you're not going to keep it up to.
Right, you got to have it so that it's a safe place.
Marilyn?
So is there a Conservation Commission, and are they represented here to speak on this? Because I noticed they're named in the town report. I know that they haven't been meeting, but are they considering them active or not present or present to make a decision on what they do with their money?
I think it's all of the above, they haven't met for years, and I, I think a number of them have resigned or...
That's the thing, if they didn't resign, are they still, is there still a Conservation Commission? So how can we vote on what to do with their money if they're not just like the Conservation Commission is resolved, or represented for each one?
I would love to see the Conservation Commission get reformulated and get a meeting together and say, we want to do this with this money, even if you guys approve it, we would take their lead on what they want to do with it. But they haven't met for a couple of years, so rather than just leaving it there, we thought it would be a good idea to be able to use it for our conserve park area or the playground.
I hope they don't want it at some point, if they do need...
Judy? And then, Richard. Oh, did you have a question? Yeah.
Yeah. Can this $3,200, in spite of the wording of the ARPA, can it be voted to be put toward roads?
No. Richard?
Yeah, does anyone have any idea as to utilization of this playground? I have never seen a single child.
I got at least three. And I, every time they come off the bus, they ask if they can play.
Okay.
And we have to say no. And it's not just them, like the Granville Hancock Bus has multiple kids coming off of it every day. So the reason you don't see kids is because...
They can't.
They can't. Because it's unsafe under the swings and everything.
So can I just ask my question? So this would actually then would be the purview of the select board, the select board would allocate that money, and you're proposing it would go to one of those two places that would be for the government of, of recreation in the town of Granville?
Yeah, and the Conservation Commission did put the Granville Commons, that was the Conservation Commission's project, so we're trying to keep money there so we can continue to mulch the blueberries that were put in years ago, and the tree rings and stuff, so that people can actually utilize all the fruit, fruiting stuff that was put in there.
I'd like to call the question.
There's another question on the question.
It's a quick one. If, if the money is not allocated for the, the two options, can it be allocated by the select board for some other use, even though it's worth it this way?
No.
Okay.
This money, and this money is remnants from Irene, from, from back when we had the buyout.
There's a motion to call the question, and it's waiting for a second. We got a second from Victoria. No further discussion. Article Seven, shall the town of Granville use the Conservation Commission Capital Investment Funds in line item 613 of approximately $3,200 for improvement to the playground behind the town hall or, and improvements to Granville Commons? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article Seven passes. Have fun. It'd be great to have a playground.
Article Eight.
Article Eight reads, shall the town of Granville borrow up to $100,000 to be paid back in no more than five years to reopen Buffalo Farm Road as a Class III road? Discussion? Doug?
Back after Irene, when Buffalo Farm washed out, and it was applied to FEMA to get money and other people, they probably correct me, they determined that there were a number of issues with reopening Buffalo Farm. It was a Class II road, which is a higher grade highway than a Class III road, which is the rest of all of our roads here. And there is a slide that has taken place there, there was work that was done decades earlier that may not have conformed to FEMA regulations, and FEMA at that time said, we're not putting a million dollars into reopening that road. And that's where we got the Butts Road alternate project primarily out of that, along with some other money that came from FEMA. I've now heard from people from emergency services, people that are up on the hill, people that don't like to go five miles through the mud where they can get down to Route 100, to see if we could open that up. It's a one, it's about a quarter mile between the barricades. I've had a couple of contractors look at it, probably to follow the Orange Book, which is the bible for the state of Vermont highway projects, to be in the neighborhood of perhaps $100,000 to get that open as a Class III road. And we put it on the question tonight, just to see if people are in favor of trying to reopen that Buffalo Farm Road.
Yes.
Doug?
That's my concern, and I love to have it open, I think it's locked into it, but I'm just concerned with the planning part of this. Are we doing it internally, or are we having the leaders do this? And what is the liability if you don't do it right again, and someone gets hurt, or someone, I, I just, I'm like to know all that stuff.
I, I, I talk, I, I've gone through FEMA.
Yeah.
I was afraid they were going to claw back some money.
Right.
I said, no, it's over, you guys can do what you want. I've talked to the engineer at the state for this district, this fund, follow the Orange Book, and do the proper drainage, and do, do what needs to be done for a Class III road, and you're good to go. I've had a couple, you know, I'm not sure whether we can do it for $100,000, to be honest with you, we may be able to do it for more or less, I'm not sure. It's a quarter mile, you know? It, it definitely would, would need to be followed by state specs. One thing I do know, that if there was a problem with it down the road, we probably would not be any eligible for any kind of grant money.
Victoria, it was next.
So I was on the select board with Irene and Norm can probably help, and Cheryl too, on my memory, but it came down to about four million dollars to actually do the engineering and the proper thing to bring it up to a class two road, so I get that it would be less, but I see a very large discrepancy between why we didn't open it and we let the thousands of people vote that and why, and how, how we can do it for a hundred thousand safely and without regret. Not that I don't, I would love to see the road open, I don't think two or three hundred of the people that pay would want it.
Norm, Norm can enlighten us.
I would like to speak on this topic, I have written some notes.
Oh.
It's a violation.
My first question, how many times can I clarify that?
Once. It's okay, there's no objection, you can read.
My name is Norm Arsenault, for those who don't, don't know me. I was on the chair of the select board for twelve years here in Granville. I've been FEMA coordinator since nineteen ninety-eight through two thousand twenty-one, so that included three major flood events, including Irene. So I had a lot of work to do on the roads, I dealt with FEMA, the state, and worked with our roads, folks, road commissioners at the line and so forth. I do have a lot of background on the slide. First of all, as Bruce said, that particular place on Buffalo Farm Road has been sliding way before Irene. We've repaired it a number of times, if you go out there, you can see the blocks down over the hill now that we used a number of years ago to try to inherit. So FEMA determined that there was a pre-existing condition there, which there was, it slid previously. They weren't going to touch it in terms of providing any money for us to redo that road. But what we did get them to do was to fund extensive geotechnical, hydraulic, and cordrowing to tell us what the subsurface was under that road. And we completed that with a firm, we contracted with a firm called GeoDesign. And GeoDesign did all of that work and all the analysis, the hydraulic studies and so forth, and then they came to the town, remember, and they said, this thing is way bigger than what we thought it was when it started. The whole hillside is sliding above the road, at the road and below, it's all sliding. It had been sliding previously as well, they were pretty impressed with that. So they did come up, we did finally get a final report. We had a special town meeting about all the details on this on September thirteenth, two thousand thirteen. And, and GeoDesign, GeoDesign was here and presented, did other presentations, but their report said it was done in positive, one to two million dollars to fix that slide. There were three slides for Irene, but the other two were smaller. This is the one we're talking about tonight, is slide three, the upper one. One to two million dollars, because there's ledge under there, the slanting of the ledge, the way the water comes down off the hill, rides down the ledge, you know, softens the soil above it, everything slides downhill, the whole business, starting above. Well, here you can see the cracks above the road where it starts. So it's a major problem, one to two million dollars. Well, FEMA was not going to help us. If FEMA didn't help us, the state wasn't going to help us financially. How the hell can this town come up with one, two million dollars? You've got to stabilize the sliding first before you build a road on top of it. That was the idea, and so what GeoDesign said, you've got to de-water this slope above, you can use these soil nails and go into the ledge horizontally to hold the slope. Then maybe you could think about building a road on top of that that will hold for a while. Well, given that advice, the select board decided that at that time that there's no way we could get that kind of money to raise it on our own. So therefore, we would close the road, bring it down to a class four standard and put the barriers up. Now, I do live on Buffalo Farm Road, so yes, I enjoy the piece of quiet more than it was before, I'll admit that. But also, it's an inconvenience to me for the actual, because I can't just go downtown and get to Route one hundred. So it goes both ways for me. But I've been watching that slide closely since Hurricane Irene came in, it's sliding all the time. It's going down a little bit more every year. The original, I looked it up today, the original width along the road was three hundred and fifty feet that the sliding comes. It's now at least four hundred geos out there the other day looking at it. It's all the way up to the upper barriers that we built to stop traffic on the upper end. So the whole thing has gotten bigger, it's still sliding, it's getting worse. The worst part of it, just by eyeball, I think the grade of the road now has swung down to six feet below the actual grade that we have to bring it up to to make it consistent again. So that's a pretty big deal. And it continues to slide. Now, I don't think a hundred thousand dollars is going to do a darn thing to help this slide, because you can't just go out there and put gravel on it. I guess the idea is, I haven't heard any plans, we haven't seen any designs for this hundred, the use of this hundred thousand dollars. I guess the idea would be, we get a whole lot of gravel, we get a whole lot of rock, we put it in on the road and we can certainly make a class three road on top of that, but last for a number of years, who knows how long? But when you put weights on a slide like that, it makes it go faster, slide faster, that's the way it's always been. So you put that kind of added weight on, well, it's going to accelerate the slide. You haven't fixed the, the major problem underneath, which is going to be extremely expensive to do. So as I say, you can build a class three road over there, we can use it for a while, either the next big storm or just annual increments of that whole hillside sliding down. Is it going to ruin your road or are you going to be continually making repairs? So I think there's a lot better system in this town than we thought about this evening for a hundred thousand dollars than to one out there and doing this at Buffalo Farm.
Thank you. Any, uh, yes?
Hi, I'm Brad Nguyen, uh, from Buffalo Farm itself. I've been hearing conversations this evening about, about what's needed to improve our roads and personally coming out of Rochester and coming down Town Line Road, there actually is a very distinct line in that road between Rochester and Granville. And I, and the road conditions in Rochester, because of the treatment of the roads, I guess the gravel quality is quite superior, I would think that if this town wanted to invest in anything, that just maintaining and building the roads up to par with our neighbors to the south and creating much more solid driving experience for those moving around up on the hill would be a primary objective, rather than trying to put a lot of money and what Norm just said, chasing, chasing money, we'll be doing that for years and years. So I would say that based on the conversation tonight, there's a lot of work that needs to be done on the roads that are already in operation, where there's caving the lower parts, the costs are increasing there. I think they may be borrowing money to improve the roads that are already existing would be a much more prudent, pragmatic approach to a situation, so.
Thanks, Eric. Yes.
This one house below us on Buffalo Farm Road, uh, we are the second house from where it's closed. And the house below us, which is not quite twenty years old, they have had to put in supports because that property is still sliding. The engineers have said that the whole mountain is sliding, I expect our house to slide down the stream. I, I know people have said things, oh, you like having a park there? Yes, I do, but I also don't want to see the town throw away a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars and then have to chase that money down the hill again. You know, it's, it's an inconvenience, we, we brought this to anybody except for the vacation house. But we're willing to put up with that. Yeah, we can come accustomed to it, everybody finds it inconvenient, I know. But if this is going to collapse again, I just don't see the point.
Marilyn?
I, I just want to say, I also looked up that old California presentation from two thousand thirteen with all the GeoDesign information and the quotes at the time, that Norm was saying were, you know, one slide, or all, you know, two slides had two concepts, but one slide was either up to one million or two million. And the other big cost, you know, was slide three, that goes anywhere from two million to three and a half million. Depending on the concept that was chosen, but the thing is, that was two thousand thirteen, so I imagine that would be ten different ways to get it. And all the costs, I mean, how many years a hundred thousand dollars would take this town to get enough money amassed to fix that so it doesn't hurt anybody or it doesn't slide when someone's driving on it in a storm? I just, you know, it gives a lot of money, the money would be better spent somewhere else.
Uh, Travis was next, and then Tracy.
So, we've been going all around for eleven years, so we've gotten pretty used to this document. So I don't see the sense of fixing that. Just, let's just keep going around and fix the roads that we have.
Tracy?
I'm Tracy Nguyen, I'm at eleven thirty-seven Buffalo Farm Road. I'll take this off so you can hear me. In nineteen seventy-eight, we named that hill Slippery Boot Hill. And in nineteen ninety-eight, after that flood, we named it just Slippery Hill, because it wasn't just our boots that were sliding. After Irene, we just call it the landslide. And, um, it is leaking from way up, there are seeps way up. The whole hillside is moving down, as you've heard. How do I know? Because I'm one of the proud owners of the landslide. I would highly recommend the town not waste its money.
Judy?
I really appreciate hearing from always the norm and knowing you're one of the Buffalo farmers.
Judy, can you stand, stand up again, a second?
And so thank you very much, and I called a question.
Oh, okay. Uh, there's a motion to call the question.
Second.
And there's a second from Victoria. Uh, and the question is, I'll stand up. Uh, shall the town of Granville borrow up to a hundred thousand dollars to be paid back in no more than five years to reopen Buffalo Farm Road as a class three road? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Say no.
No.
Okay. Article eight fails. Sorry. Article...
Let them leave.
Cowards. Article nine. Article nine. Shall the town of Granville vote to appropriate five hundred dollars to the corner school resource center of Granville, Vermont in support of its community programs this year? Any discussion? All in favor of Article nine, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm part of ten.
Oh, I'm a part of ten.
Okay. Article ten. Shall the, I know. Shall the town of Granville vote to accept, exempt the mosque Glen Grange from property taxes for five fiscal years, beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven?
I call a question.
Is there a question? Is there, yes?
This is just a continuation of...
Yes, yes, yes.
All in favor of Article ten, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article ten passes.
I'm voting Article eleven.
Thank you. Thank you. Article eleven. Shall the town of Granville vote to permit the operation of cannabis retailers and integrated licensees, subject to such municipal ordinance and regulation, as the town select board may lawfully adopt and implement? Yes?
I just have one question.
Yes?
Do we permit anything else and do we say yes to this? Does it open us up to the zone and permitting of other things by the select board?
No, this is just a question that has been on many towns, um, town, town warnings, just to allow retail and cultivation primarily. But it does not open it up for any kind of zone.
Yes?
My name is Robert, a little town road. The, uh, one of the things that happens under the cannabis regulations is the town has to opt in for retail sales. If they don't do anything, it means no retail sale takes place. The town specifically has to opt in and vote as to whether retail of cannabis takes place. As far as growing and wholesaling, we don't need town permission according to the way the regs are set up. So it's just for the retail side of the cannabis operation and integrated license. So if I were to take, there's a, a second called a tier one. If I were to be a tier one cannabis grower with an integrated license, I'm allowed to learn twenty-five plants outside, a thousand square feet of grow space inter, inside. If I want to go for an integrated retail, it involves a lot more, a lot more money, trust me, in that I can now wholesale, process, package, test, and sell. So there's not, there's a lot that goes into it, whereas a wholesaler, if I were to turn around and say it's a tier, tier one wholesaler, okay, I'm growing it, I'm cultivating it, I'm sort of packaging it for sale, but it's wholesale, so that the individual can maintain it on their own. Forever, you package it up in your own hand. So there are a lot of ways to do it. The town has to opt in for retail sales. You can't, everything else that doesn't require the opt-in, I still need permits from the state, licenses from the state where I can do that. But the only section that requires the town to opt in is the retail sale of cannabis for sale. Thank you.
It's great to have another farmer in town. Uh, any other questions for Bob? Richard?
Can anyone define any benefit to the town that we have?
There's, there's no benefit at this point. I know that towns that have, um, have got the one percent local option tax, they do, that, that would be included here, but we don't have that.
I want to add to that, to the one percent option tax. When the rates are lifted, I can't prison that, I cannot specifically take that one percent and assess it just for cannabis sale. What I have to do is, if I town have one percent that evaluated tax, then cannabis would be included. As far as the benefit to the town, the resident benefit. I mean, it's money, you know, it's, it's a business. And it, it, it just, it's cash in hand. One of the issues is, you know, if you say cash, you know, one of the problems that is occurring is finding a bank that will deal with cannabis business, because it's still against federal law. So what happens is, is that the banking industry here in Vermont is really kind of shaping itself out as to what it's going to do in regards to cannabis business. So the benefits to the town is the benefit, is the benefit to the resident, you know, as far as cash operating.
Well, because the way this is reported, it just makes it sound as though Granville, along with all the other towns in the state are being asked to either say yes or no to the possibility, and then the select board is the one who makes the decisions as to whether it's actually going to happen. Is that correct?
I'm not, I'm not quite sure. I, I'm not, I'm not quite sure whether it's just like a liquor license that would have to be acquired.
I didn't understand the question.
Does the, does the town have to, again, you know, the retail operation wants to do that, does the...
And then whatever the Select Board deems they need to permit for, they will accord to, am I right about this?
But, but it's, but, but it's, right now, we have no power over agriculture.
No.
Okay, so this would be the same kind of thing. If, if, if we voted to allow it, then it would go right to the retailer.
Okay, so if this is worded in a future way?
Well, it, should the legislature come back, I think it's the way, it's worded that way, should the legislature say, oh, the towns, you can do this and this and this and this, then we could, but as of now, we don't have that ability.
No, and one of the things that's happening is the CCP, which is Cannabis Control Board, is still really kind of shaking a lot of these things out. When you look at permitting, it was supposed to start to happen early in May. There's been two issues, two. Now, legal sales supposed to start playing technically October first, they're really shooting for October twenty-second. That's not going to happen if people don't get into the period here. You know, it's an agricultural problem. I need a certain amount of time for it to grow, yeah, I can grow inside. But there's money involved and everything else. If it turns around, you're only authorized to do two a month. And how many months do you have left? So legal sales take place, you know? But this is strictly under Act one sixty-four for retail seller.
There's a motion to call the question.
Second.
Judy, seconds. The question reads, shall the town of Granville vote to permit the operation of cannabis retailers and integrated licensees subject to such municipal ordinance and regulation as the town select board may lawfully adopt and implement? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article eleven passes. And.
I vote.
Moving twelve and second. Okay, so these are kind of what, shall the town of Granville vote to authorize property taxes to be paid to the treasurer as provided by law in four equal installments with due dates being August seventeenth, November seventeenth, February seventeenth, and May seventeenth? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And somebody moved article thirteen, did I hear?
Yes, yes.
Shall the town of Granville vote that overdue taxes will bear an interest rate of one percent per month or fraction thereof for the first three months thereafter, and thereafter one and one-half percent per month or fraction thereof from the due date of such tax pursuant to thirty-two VSA? We don't have to do this every year, this article, right? All in favor of thirteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You should have told us that before we put it on.
I know, I did. I said, when you were a selectman, we, oh, that's.
Okay. All right. Next year we won't do it. Next year.
Melissa's here.
Yeah, the broken condition is sort of what it is. Take that one.
Yes, right.
I vote article fourteen.
Fourteen. The following, for everyone's information, this is an advisory, non-binding article, there won't be a vote, you can express your opinion. Fourteen, shall, shall the town of Granville vote to support the Granville Select Board's adoption of a telecommunications ordinance as recommended in the two thousand nineteen town plan and pursuant to twenty-four VSA chapter twenty-two ninety-one, enumeration of powers nineteen? And Judy, go ahead.
I, you said there won't be a vote?
No.
I understand, it's just.
It's an advisory vote.
What's that? It's a non-binding article.
I know, but there would still be a vote on it.
There would?
Yeah.
I didn't, didn't think we voted on non-binding articles.
They're just advisory vote, we won't vote on them.
I suppose we could. Sure, let's vote. If you all want to vote, that's fine.
This, this was a petitioned article, I've done a little research on it. The, most of the towns that have a telecommunications ordinance do have zoning. Half of the towns in the Two Rivers District, there's twenty-seven, twenty-eight towns in the central Vermont area, more than half of them have no zoning, just like Granville. The, there hasn't been a telecommunications ordinance over the last ten years in this region. I understand people would like that. At this point, the state takes on all telecommunications towers, and they go cross agencies with agency of natural resources, forest and parks, health, they're all involved, and they're really the ones that are the permitting entities, so.
Judy.
Yep. I know there is rules of state and federal regulations, but each town is different. Each town is allowed to have their own town plan, and by the same token, I would say we should take advantage of the right to have a town plan.
This was, this, this was put through the planning commission a year or two ago, and the draft never went any further because it didn't get approved by the planning commission. So that's why I was petitioned to come to the Select Board and say, okay, Select Board, come up with a telecommunications ordinance. It could be very simple, it can be very simple, and it could be very complex. But again, you know, I, I think in Granville, we're going through a tower right now, I can give you a quick update on that, the town ordinances do not, do not hold a whole lot of weight in the state hearings in front of the Public Utility Commission.
Judy.
I think we should take advantage of every means we have to direct the development in our town. That's why we have a town plan, and we have other ordinances, and. And, and, and it does give us more say in the Public Utility Commission proceedings.
Kate?
Is the, is the language for what this is somewhere in this package of information, so we would actually know what we're loading up?
Judy.
Is it, is it in here somewhere where we've been allowed to read it?
It's next door.
But, but it's not, it wasn't, it wasn't, it's not in this room, it's not here.
You mean?
No.
Yeah, you're asking us to vote on something called the telecommunications ordinance, but we don't actually know what that is.
It's of a telecommunications ordinance, so the Select Board did draft it, the Select Board were coming up for the telecommunications ordinance.
Oh, I thought that was.
I don't believe that this, this was never intended to take the ten-page draft that went through the planning commission that never went anywhere. That may be a starting point, but it, it never, it never went that far. As far as, as far as ordinances go, it would go through the planning commission, then it goes to the Select Board, there's a whole process, then it goes to a public hearing before it gets adopted, so, you know, there's a lot of bites to the apple.
Yes?
Anyone else want to speak?
I was going to ask, just a procedural question from the chair. This is a non-binding article, meaning whichever way we vote, it's more of an advisory situation from the public, correct? That's how, okay, yeah, go ahead.
So I'm just, I'm just wondering, this, so we're just trying to find out if people want to have an ordinance in town. I thought probably they already kind of voted on that, I don't know why this keeps coming up. Is this a legal?
This was a legally petitioned article.
Okay.
Judy. Oops. Have Judy one more time, there was, there's a motion to call the question, but go ahead, Judy.
I just want to point out that the ordinance that was drafted was quite legally submitted to the Select Board, and there are copies of it, and it was reviewed by the Regional Planning Commission, and there are copies of it next door.
I'd like to look here, I just wondered if it was in here somewhere, so we could see what it was. I'd like to call the question.
Yep, there's a motion already to call the question from Jim, and someone seconded it? Did someone second?
Judy did.
Oh, Judy, okay. So just reading the question, shall the town of Granville vote to support the Granville Select Board's adoption of a telecommunications ordinance as recommended in the two thousand nineteen town plan and pursuant to twenty-four VSA twenty-two ninety-one enumerations of powers? All in favor of article fourteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I believe the nays have it.
Can we have a bigger ballot? I'm a member. Show of hands.
Yeah, right, sure, would you like a show of hands? Okay, all in favor, raise your hands? Okay.
I heard more ayes than. You say all, all?
All against it, say, raise your hands? Sorry. Right. Do we have to tell?
I, I vote article fifteen.
Right, article fourteen fails to transact any other business to come before said meeting. Anybody else? Kristy?
I would just like to, in light of the budget that we passed through the school and the fact that this is a bus stop, and this could be a facility that got rented out to events and things once COVID is over again and stuff like that, that back on article, whatever it was, anyway, fix the playground, is what I'm about to say to that money, thank you very much, because you do have children, imaginary and.
Inner plans.
The little, the little ones to play on the playground.
Another, another good thing to know, and I thought, Kristy, you were going to bring it up, is that the school budget is down forty cents, so you're going to see a lot of tax cuts.
Anybody want to move to adjourn? Jim, second. All favor of adjourning. Goodbye, see you next year.